I would like to call to order the special city council meeting. The time is now 5:33 PM. City Clerk Duarte, will you please take role?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Frometta.
Present.
Councilmember LaPlante.
Present.
Councilmember Trujillo is excused. Mayor Protem Alvarez.
Present.
And Mayor Pacheco.
Present. The first item is closed session minutes, which we will be pulling from the agenda. And now, before we begin the public comment period, I would like to remind members of the public that the city's meeting rules contained in the Downey municipal code prohibit any conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Copies of the meeting rules are located in the back of the chambers. City Clerk Duarte, have we received any written correspondence on closed session items to be read into the record?
We have not, Mayor.
Members of the public wishing to address the city council regarding closed session items may now come forward and form a line. Each speaker will have four minutes to address the council on items listed on the special council meeting, special meeting agenda. Mr. Herman? Your time is running, Mr. Herman.
Madam Mayor, you know, I'm trying to set up, you know, why don't you just take a chill pill? Get your chills out of a bunch, baby. Now for the fireworks regarding government code section of the Brown I-549, 56.95, a liability claim. Well, first, I'm going to read into the record my claim. Violation of First and Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments and Article Section Two of California Constitution.
Mr. Herman, that's not on the agenda.
Well, let me get to my point. Regarding enforcement of unconstitutional rules and decorum in which you brought in your presentation prior to my engagement on Raoul Salazar, claim number 2115565, workers' compensation, appeals board number ADJ Jackass 14605579, agency claimed against the city of Downey regarding workers' compensation, niggas. So, what is a worker's compensation? Well, it's an alleged liability that should not be construed that the employee is lying or faking an injury, rather that the city should be responsible, 100% liable. As you see, there's no one behind me, Ms. Alvarez, don't worry. So, again, why do we have all these liabilities now coming up that Mr. Levas Gilbert A. Levas is leaving? I think the FBI at 310-477-6565 would like to know, right? In addition to that, welcome back, Ms. Frometta. She's been gone for two weeks, probably ratting out some of you about her allegations.
Second warning, Mr. Herman.
Ratting out her allegations on liability number two, bitch, government code section 549, 56.95, bitch, liability claim number two, bitch, workers' compensation, bitch, claim, claimant Scott Wilcox, fuck the mayor. Stop interrupting speaker. I gotta get my thoughts together, and you fucking keep interrupting. Why don't you learn to fucking bitch off? Now, I'm going back to Scott Wilcox, bitch, now that I got your fucking attention. Claim number 2150763, that's why you wouldn't make a good assembly person, too fucking stupid.
Third warning, City Manager Levas, can we please have Mr. Herman escorted out?
Chief, can you please have him removed? Thank you.
We will now reconvene the special city council meeting. Madam interim city attorney, do we have anything to report on closed session action?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city council convened a special closed session meeting at 5:30 and recessed into closed session to discuss the two items of business listed on the posted agenda under Government Code Section 54956.95. The city council discussed only the two items of business listed on the agenda and took no reportable action. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I would now like, the special city council meeting is now adjourned. The time is 6:30, 6 PM. I would now like to call to order the regular city council meeting. City Clerk Duarte, will you please take role?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Frometa?
Present.
Councilmember LaPlante?
Present.
Councilmember Trujillo is excused. Mayor Protem Alvarez?
Present.
And Mayor Pacheco?
Present.
Okay. I would now like to call up a special guest. Brooklyn Kravik from Calvary Chapel will lead us in the invocation. The invocation.
You can sit down here, young lady.
Please, sir.
Hi, my name is Brooklyn Kravik and today I'm going to be talking about wisdom because I think that everybody needs wisdom to discern right from wrong. And today's story is called, from the Bible, the King Solomon's wisdom. So, there was these two ladies who both lived in the same house and they both had a baby. One of the ladies rolled over her baby and her baby died, but she switched the babies with the living and the dead one. And when the first woman woke up that morning, she saw her son dead, but when she looked at him in light, it wasn't her son. So, they went to the king and they told him that story. And then they kept arguing and arguing that the living one was theirs. So, King Solomon finally said to one of his guards, "Go get me a sword and the baby." And he said, "I will divide the baby into one half so both of you can have it." But then, one of the first women said, "Just let him live. Just give him to the other woman." And the other woman said, "Go ahead, I don't care." So, King Solomon gave the baby to the first woman because only a true mother would want their child to live. And that's the story. And I think that it's a good story because everybody needs wisdom and we should ask God for wisdom. Thank you. Thank you. Let me lead you in prayer. Close your eyes and bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for everything that you have given us, Lord, and I just pray that everything will go good. And I just pray that everybody here will ask the Lord for wisdom. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Beautiful.
Great job, Brooklyn, and really words of wisdom. Thank you. Next up, I would like to invite up Jeannie Wood, who will be leading us in the pledge of allegiance. Hello, everybody stand. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now is the time for city council member announcements, requests for future agenda items, conference meeting reports. And I will go ahead and start off with my far right, with Councilmember LaPlante.
Thank you. I've had the opportunity to attend a number of events over the last three weeks. The Memorial Day event at the Downey Cemetery. Unfortunately, I wasn't well that evening and not able to attend the Mexico in El Corazon. I gave my ticket to one of my neighbors, and I got a great report on the event. Attended the LA Division meeting of the League of California Cities, two of the Chamber of Commerce Ribbon Cuttings, the Downey, Downtown Downey Improvement Association Mixer. Last Thursday, a breakfast meeting in Pico Rivera with the Assistant Secretary of Commerce from the United States, who was out here and getting input from cities. And Friday, I was able to attend the meeting of the Board of Directors of the Friends of the Downey Library. And that's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Councilmember Mario Trujillo. Oh, actually, Mayor Protem Alvarez, sorry.
It's okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to our meetings. And I wanted to request to have an item on the agenda for next council meeting. I know businesses, small businesses, and I'm talking about like, the street vendors are having difficulty sometimes with permits and other things. So I would like to request if, for next meeting, if we can waive the fees for the first applications. That way, they feel more comfortable coming to the city and requesting this permit.
Councilmember Alvarez, we will go ahead and put a report for you to consider that item during your next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. And next up, we have Councilmember Frometa.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everybody. It's so nice to see you once again here in our council chambers. My, I always say, engaged communities are strong communities. So thank you for joining us tonight, and thank you for those of you that are joining us via Zoom or via the city's YouTube channel. It is important to come together and know what is going on with our city. I had the pleasure of attending a couple of events since the last meeting, and that was, I want to give a shout out to Alameda Elementary. They had their robotics, their robotics champions, third and fourth grade, and it is really important for our community. I know with our Columbia Memorial Space Center, we have a strong STEM program, and we also have a strong STEM program throughout our school district. And it was a joy to see the children and their families at this event. I also attended the Gangs Out of Downey Annual Fundraising Gala, and once again, Gangs Out of Downey is such an important organization for our community. We partner with, of course, the various organizations and to ensure that Downey continues to be a gang-free city. Couple of things I would like to ask our staff to look into is the following. I've been getting reports of excessive trash in some of the strip malls in some of our areas, and I know that it is incumbent upon those business owners to empty those trash receptacles. I think we, as we go through the Downey Gateway, or the Promenade, or the Landing, or any other strip mall in our city, the expectation, of course, is for our residents and our youth to Bennett, to put the trash in the right receptacle. But it's also the responsibility of the business owner and the management of that area to ensure there's enough trash receptacles and make sure that that area remains clean. One of the other things that I would look, also like staff to look into, is I'm noticing some of the areas, some of the landscaping around some of our businesses is really unkept. One that comes to mind, and I've received complaints about, is Chase Bank on the corner of Brookshire in Firestone. That area is looking really, really unkept. And so, again, going back to business owners and management companies in that regard. Also, I realize that with summer upon us and our high schools out, we continuously have issues with speeding. And I know that that is an issue that has grown. And thank you, Chief Murray, I know we've had discussions about that. But particularly as the summer days approach, I've seen, I've actually witnessed gatherings at the Stonewood Parking Lot and others, in the mid-afternoon on weekends, on Saturdays and Sundays, they're having their truck events, and they're doing donuts in the parking lots. I've actually witnessed that a couple of times in the past month. And last but not least, I want to, once again, bring up the Bennett Campaign. I know that we've had it over the last couple of three years, maybe two, three years, but I think it's important and maybe do a more concerted effort with our community. And again, I say that it all starts at home. We are responsible as parents or guardians to ensure that our children are continuing to treat our streets and our neighborhoods the way we want them to be treated. And I see excessive trash in different parts of our city. I also would like to make a more concerted effort. I know it's done also with the PD, I think on a monthly basis or a quarterly basis, the encampments, the homeless encampments. We are seeing homeless individuals outside of businesses. There's been a little situation outside of the Dollar Tree, right here on Firestone, and residents have reached out regarding concerns. Also, residents on Pico Vista, on the north side of the city, there are some encampments behind some of those homes, and residents are expressing great concern, because they can't go to their backyard without fearing somebody may jump over from the riverbed side. And homes with young children are hearing all kinds of interesting altercations in the middle of the night. So if we can, please take a look at that. Madam Mayor, that will conclude my comments for tonight.
Thank you. And next up, we have Councilmember Trujillo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First and foremost, I want to congratulate our mayor on her successful campaign. Our mayor has made it into the runoff. And I was wondering if staff could look into whether a Downey resident has ever represented us in Sacramento. I'm curious as to that, if the staff could look into that. I think we might be making history.
It hasn't happened, yes.
Yes, yes. So congratulations, Madam Mayor. I wish you luck. And I'm really excited about having Downey representation up there. I want to invite everybody to the skate park. As you know, we have a skate park. My 12-year-old loves a skate park, and we're having an event, June 22nd, is it?
Yes, Go Skate Day.
Go Skate Day, June 22nd. It's in the middle of the day, because, you know, it's summer school, or we're out for summer, so we know it's during the day. Hopefully, you could come out and enjoy the activities. I'm very much looking forward to that. I had an opportunity to meet with our city manager and our police chief. Thank you to both for meeting with a nonprofit, PESA. We're looking into juvenile diversion programs, right? And what we have already in place in conjunction with the district, and to see if we may need additional services. One of the things that separates our city, I believe, from other cities is we pride ourselves on trying to say that we do not have any gangs. So I'm going to request, perhaps from our chief, just an update on where we at with the issue of gangs. I do get some complaints about graffiti, and our Public Works Department, as everybody knows, is excellent about responding within 24 hours. They will be out there. But first, please know that we try to engage our police department to document the graffiti, because that can be helpful in investigations. So sometimes we have to have PD go out, photograph it, and then we cover it up. So if we can see where we're at with that. We're very proactive, thanks to organizations such as Good, Gangs Out of Downey. We believe that by working with our district, Dr. Jagielski primarily, and identifying at-risk youth, that if we provide them with services, we may prevent them from going into the criminal justice system. So thank you to Good. Continue to have some budget meetings. I'm hopeful that we'll be able to approve our budget and move forward before Mr. Levas leaves. We do have a special city council set for that. When is it, Mr. Levas? Tomorrow. So some of you always, you know, complain that sometimes we schedule these meetings when it's not appropriate for people to work. Just know, we schedule these meetings, sometimes it's difficult during the day. Our apologies. I attended the Greek Festival.
Congratulations. What a fantastic event.
Sorry. I attended the Greek Festival. Congratulations to St. George Orthodox Church, a magnificent event, and bringing the community together. It was really good to see so many of our Downey residents celebrating the Greek culture. Today is Flag Day. For me, it's a special day, because it is my mom's birthday. She would have been 85 today. And Ofelia Rodriguez Trujillo is probably the most American person I ever met. I thank her for coming to this country, for having me be born in this amazing country. And I love the American flag. Happy Flag Day, everybody. Went to the Downey Police Department Fire Annual Golf Event. It's for the foundation. It's a very important foundation, just some more of the great work that our police and fire departments do. The foundation is set up to assist our men and women who may be going through personal challenges, perhaps financially. The foundation steps in. For example, there's been cases, I believe, of one of our own being, their family impacted by a fire, and so the foundation stepped in to help. So congratulations to the fire department and the police department on a sold-out event. It seemed like it was really fun. The Mexico en su corazón show, I thought was fantastic. So good to see so many Downey residents. I've gotten great comments about it. I believe it was a good investment in bringing culture to our beautiful city. I did attend the Downtown Downey Mixer with the Downtown Business Association. They're really working on making downtown Downey a destination, but being very careful about not impacting our neighborhoods. So some of their biggest issues are security and cleanliness. Particularly of concern is the parking lot. And so we're working on that with the Downtown Downey Association. We have the Renters Rights Committee. Thank you to Mayor Protem Alvarez for bringing the issue of renter rights to the center of who we are as a city. As you know, our population, our residents, are 50% renters. So some of the biggest issues that impact our renters are based around parking and accessibility to bins to be able to dump. Apart from other issues, obviously, I'm happy to report that in working with the Fair Housing Foundation, we're very proactive about having, about being able to provide services to renters in Downey. I asked for data. I want to know how many complaints we're getting about unfair landlords, and just trying to build a community where there's a balance between renters and homeowners, because they're both equally important. I attended the Kiwanis Annual Recruitment Dinner, the Historic Society. And I really want to highlight the Rose Float Association. I attended their mystery dinner, and I had a really good conversation with, I believe it's President Jeremy Clefton. And they spend so much time fundraising, I'm going to commit myself to helping them with that. I mean, that is the largest arts and craft project, if you will, that our city has. So for those of you who want to get involved, I really encourage you to get involved with the Rose Float Association, the award-winning Downey Rose Float Association. Congratulations to them. Thank you. Couple of items I want staff to look into. Apparently, there's a petition going around that would have Downey establish an ordinance, if you will, making it one of the first health minimum wage cities in LA County. I would like staff to provide an impact report, if you will, on what this means to our hospitals, right? I think it would impact perhaps Kaiser and PIH. So if we can have a presentation on.
En Rancho.
En Rancho, thank you. So we can have a presentation on that. I would appreciate that, the impact of this minimum healthcare ordinance, please. In addition, I would like an update on the dog park, which is, I guess, real San Gabriel. I know that we had a million dollars. I'd like to see where we're at, and to see if we could do something about the dog park. We might need a survey of sorts. I'm hearing concerns that big dogs are jumping into with the little dogs. I'm really not sure what's going on. I just want to put it out there.
Yeah, there's been some of that, and there's also some belief that it's outlived the size, and it needs to be bigger. We're also looking at potential other sites that we can have an additional park as well. So that'll come back to you as well.
Fantastic. Just know that we absolutely love the fact that we have a dog park for you. We hear you, we're going to work on it. Last two things, I think it's time that we bring the Stay Gallery discussion to the council to see what is the future of the Stay Gallery going to be like. They have concerns about funding, but one voice, and I think it's time that the council discuss it. So we should agendize the Stay Gallery in the future, if the staff can provide a report on where we're at with funding the Stay Gallery, and for us to decide what we're going to do forward, if we can do that for the next council meeting of the 28th, I would appreciate that. And the last thing is, I would like to know what the status is of the Downey Museum of Art Collection. Where is it? Who has it? Do we still own it? Apparently, the Long Beach Museum, where it's at, seems to think that it's theirs.
I believe it is theirs. That was, I believe it was handled by the Attorney General's Office. They ended up getting involved in it, but I think the collection primarily is in Long Beach. But we'll come back with you with more clarification in terms of exactly what happened and, you know, where things are at.
Thank you, yeah. And look, if we don't own it, we don't own it. But people want to know, and I thought I would bring it. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I know it was a lot, but we had three weeks, and I've been here because I haven't been traveling, so there you go.
Thank you, thank you. And I want to thank you all for joining us here this evening at our council meeting. It's nice to see our community here. It's nice to see our PD, and I see a lot of firefighters. So thank you, Downey Fire, for being here, for everything that you do in our community. You have tough work. I know you work long hours, so thank you very much, Downey Fire. So a couple of, well, actually, I want to, I do want to recognize some individuals. We do have our Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce, Michael Calvert.
Martha Sotatani, Downey Unified School Board Member. We also have Jeannie Wood, Parks and Rec Commissioner. And we have our Downey Youth Commissioners. Can I please have Sam and Isaac please stand? These are our future leaders. Some events that I attended, I had the pleasure of attending on.
Some events that I attended, I had the pleasure of attending on Zoom, a mental health awareness for kids. It was hosted by Public Health Council of the Los Angeles County Medical Association. What was discussed is mental health, mental health awareness amongst the youth, given everything that they've been dealing with through the pandemic. And one of the programs I discussed was the Girls on Fire program that we held here in Downey. And one of the components of Girls on Fire is mental health awareness along with other topics. But my focus was on mental health awareness and how we're advocating for that and teaching our youth about it at our Girls on Fire workshop. And I know that's something also that our youth commissioners have also worked on. So if anybody was watching our council meeting, at our last council meeting, our youth commissioners provided a video about mental health awareness. Also, May 27, I attended a grand opening for Kennel Health. Kennel Health is a primary care provider for our senior population and their families. This Kennel Health is located off of Rosecrans and Woodruff, and therefore in close proximity to the city of Downey. And I also had the pleasure of attending the Downey Rose Float Association Murder Mystery Night on the same day, which that's a pride and joy here in the city of Downey, having our own rose float. And like Councilmember Trujillo mentioned, this float is built by volunteers and by the fundraisers that are, they hold annually. And it's a fun event. If you want to participate, they have, the rose float is built during the holidays in December. And so we'll be announcing in December the times and dates available in case anybody wants to volunteer and help out the rose float. Also, I attended the memorial service at the Downey Cemetery and a groundbreaking ceremony at St. Pius, St. Matthias Academy. This campus is constantly expanding and there's great things happening at the campus. In fact, we do have a student here from St. Pius Matthias. I hate for him to stand up again, but Isaac, he goes to St. Pius Matthias. Let's give him another round of applause. He's on student body. And also, on June 1, I had the pleasure of attending Mexico en el Corazon. It was a full house. Our Downey Theater was packed, amazing turnout. I just want to thank Councilmember Trujillo for bringing this to the attention of our council and Vicente Ortiz for helping coordinate having Mexico en el Corazon here in the city of Downey. And last Saturday, I had the pleasure of attending our first team-up to cleanup event. Our focus was in the southern part of Downey, near Golden Park. We were encouraging residents to bring out their bulky items so that way we could pick up bulky items. And we had, I believe, two or three bins full of bulky items, so it was a success. But we were driving up and down different streets in the southern part of the city, reminding people to bring out their items. In fact, I see, is that Eddie back there? Eddie, please stand. He actually was a big help in our cleanup event. And also yesterday, I had the pleasure of volunteering at our Downey Police and Fire Foundation Golf Tournament. It was a huge success. We had a lot of golfers. We're hoping that next year it's going to be equally as good and as fun. But I think it was a lot of fun, right, Chief? Both Chiefs were there, right? Yeah, so we had a good amount of people there. We'll be announcing it again next year. And like I said, hopefully, it's, I don't think it could be bigger, but hopefully it's even better because there's already a large attendance. So thank you to all of the people that participated, to our Downey Police and Fire. This foundation is a great foundation. It was set up to help our police and our firefighters during a time of crisis and when they're in need of help. And that concludes my comments. Now time for presentations.
Madam Mayor, could I tag on to something from Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
I don't have a problem with talking about the Stay Gallery, but I'd like to do it in a context of all of our arts and entertainment and history and have a full discussion of what we're spending money on rather than doing it, you know, piecemeal. Let's talk about this, let's talk about, let's talk about all, the whole program and figure out how much money we want to spend and what we want to spend it on. Because I think unfortunately, we've, over the years, you know, we've got little pieces here and there stuck around, and we could probably just have a full discussion of what we want to see, whether it's.
I agree.
Twice as much as we're doing or half as much. Whatever we're doing, we need to look at it as a whole.
So just for clarification, because I want to make sure that staff gets clear direction on this. We'll beam back information regarding a holistic view of all our arts. I know that's something that we talked about at our last budget session that we were going to do. You, Councilmember LaPlante, want to include the Stay Gallery in that discussion as our overall discussion in terms of where we are and what direction we are going with the arts? If that's the pleasure of the council, I would be happy to do that because I just want to make it abundantly clear that I want to give you what you're asking for.
I like that idea, Councilmember LaPlante. I think it's a very good idea. My only concern, and perhaps the staff can look into it, Mr. City Manager, was they seem to be under time pressure. Perhaps the staff should ask, like, what is going on? But in conversations I have with them, they're very concerned that even though the rent is covered, that they may have to close their doors. I mean, they're using words like that. So, you know.
Well, because the money, the money is coming to, you know, it's under the fiscal year, and so it's.
Yeah, so.
The conversation we need to have.
I think it's great that we have a global discussion, but I don't know the time sensitivity issues of the gallery, and perhaps somebody should figure that out.
Okay, well, what we'll do is, assuming that, you know, we have enough time between now and next week to get everything together, we'll have it on for the next agenda item. If not, we'll reach out. Well, we're going to reach out to Stay Gallery anyway and find out where they're at with the contract, and we'll let you know. But our goal is to have everything inclusive to you as a presentation.
Okay, so we do have five presentations this evening. The first presentation is the introduction of Mark Scott, who will be serving as our interim city manager. So at this time, I would like to invite up our city manager Gilbert Levas to do an introduction.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, I'm going to be brief because I want to make sure that I give an opportunity to Mr. Scott to come up. But I am delighted to announce that the council has selected Mark Scott. He is a seasoned city manager that's been around many cities in Southern California, here locally in Culver City, Beverly Hills, and Burbank, and amongst many others. He's got 45 years of government experience. He will be the interim city manager from now until the council appoints a permanent city manager. So our guestament is somewhere, anywhere from six to eight months is he'll be here under those duties as a city manager. So couldn't be happier to have somebody of his caliber in the seat to guide the city for the next several months. So, Mark, come on up.
Thank you. And I hadn't imagined that when I started talking, I'd be facing this direction. So if you'll, if you'll forgive me for swiveling a little bit, I am grateful to be here. I am, I wasn't able to be here when I was appointed, and I would have liked to have been, but I wasn't able. I actually live in Fresno and will be commuting weekly up here or down here for the opportunity to do this job. But I wanted to thank the city council for entrusting me in this role. I know I've got to face the microphone. I tell people that all the time. And I look forward so much to doing this job. I thank the council for saving me from the burdens of retirement. I had watched as many Family Feud reruns as I can handle. And frankly, I love being a city manager. And the delight for me is that I get to be the interim city manager in the city of Downey. This is such a phenomenal place. The last two days, thanks to the graciousness of Gilbert and the other staff members, I've had a chance to get around and see things. You know, I'm an LA County guy in my professional career for a long time. I know a lot about LA County cities, and I have known for a long time that Downey was a special place, and especially in the minds of people who live here. And the last couple of days, I have seen so much that I'm so impressed by that this city is staying on top of the needs of the community. So I just wanted to say tonight that I pledge to you that I will do my best to keep up with the objectives and the agenda of the city council. I pledge to you that I will do my best to support this staff, this excellent staff that the city has, and do my best to do the transition to a new city manager. And finally, I also pledge to you that I will do my best to be responsive to the city council and to this community. And thank you again for the opportunity to be here. I'm looking forward to it. I'm not on the clock tonight. I'm a civilian tonight, but when I come back the next time, I'll get busy and look forward to setting up some meetings with council members and doing some tours with each of you and getting to know people in the community. I hope people will stop me and introduce themselves, and I look forward to that. So thank you for everything, and I'll let you get on to the real important business, which is honoring these retirees who have worked their lives in this community, and that is far more important. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark, for joining us this evening. Next up on our presentation agenda, we're going to be presenting city tiles to retiring employees of the Downey Fire Department. So to assist me on this one, I am going to call up Chief Dan Hurlock.
All right, if I could have the three retirees that we're going to recognize tonight come on up, and I'll just say a few words about each one of them individually. And I'm going to go in order of retirement, not based on anything else, but other than retirement date. First of all, I'd like to recognize Mike Whitney. He served 35-plus years with the Downey Fire Department. He was hired on September 1, 1986. He worked every rank in the fire department, firefighter, paramedic, engineer, captain, and battalion chief. During that time, he was a breathing apparatus technician, equipment coordinator, training officer. He was in charge of facilities, equipment, and apparatus, and he is the unofficial department historian.
There's not much to say. I enjoy every minute of it, 35 years. I'd like to thank the council and the department heads and literally everybody that works for the city, the citizens. I mean, you're a Downey firefighter. You just, you can't be treated any better. I mean, I think what sums it up for me, everything I have is from the city of Downey. My home, my belongings, everything. It's been a great career. The support from the city and the citizens is just, it's overwhelming at times. It's, it was just fun. It was a fun 35 years. I'd do it again in a heartbeat. But I have a lot more. I really like Steve Harvey, so I'm not coming out of retirement because I got a lot more Family Feud to watch.
Thanks, Mike. All right, next is Rich Voss. He served 33-plus years for the Downey Fire Department and the citizens of Downey. He was hired on August 1, 1988. Rich was a licensed paramedic for more than 30 years. If you know Rich, you'll understand that he is probably the happiest guy in the fire service, most cheerful person of the Downey Fire Department, for sure. He brought that with him to work every day. Rich was also an equipment coordinator, and he was instrumental in starting the Downey's USR Heavy Rescue Program back in the early phases. So Rich, congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you. And thank you to the people of Downey for giving me a job.
And next is Captain Holcomb, Dave Holcomb. 35-plus years as well, serving the citizens of Downey, the Downey Fire Department. He was hired on June 2, 1986. He served several roles in the fire department, in the Fire Prevention Bureau. He was a training officer, EMT instructor, and auxiliary coordinator. And probably his most notable accomplishment was getting my career in the fire service started. He, when he was an auxiliary coordinator, he hired me as an auxiliary here. So thank you, Dave. Congratulations on your retirement.
I also want to mention that he is also an instructor at Downey Adult School for the EMT program.
Thank you very much. Won't take up too much of your time, but one thing for sure, as far as my career goes, no regrets, right? Not even one letter. And really no regrets for the career I took or where I had my career at. It's been wonderful. The city's been graceful my whole time I've been here, and I appreciate everything. I've always felt, always like I've, you know, just was blessed to be here and have this type of career. So thank you very much. Richard? Rich, why don't you go in front?
Do you want to stand over here?
Next up, we have a special recognition for another retiring employee. With over 24 years of service, this exceptional woman has done a phenomenal job here in the city of Downey. She works tirelessly. We all love her. We will miss her. And she had a birthday on Saturday, if I remember correctly. So for this presentation, I'm going to call up Delfino Konsooji. And if Delfino says we shall sing "Happy Birthday", then we shall sing "Happy Birthday". But I still have Carol Roland. Please come forward.
Carol will sing "Happy Birthday".
Ready? One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Carol. Happy birthday to you.
Well, that won't pass up for Capitol Records, would it? As director, I am very fortunate to have dedicated and hard-working employees in the Public Works Department. Carol Roland is no exception. Carol was born and raised in Detroit, Michigan. She moved to California in 1974, where she landed a job at Capitol Records. So that's the connection, right? So let me get this straight. Carol moved from Detroit to Hollywood. So she left Motown for Capitol Records. She went from listening to Marvin Gaye, Diana Ross and the Supremes, Michael Jackson and the Jackson 5, to helping launch the careers of Bob Seger, Little River Band, the gambler Kenny Rogers, and Kim Carnes, better known for Betty Davis eyes. Interesting. Well, I hope I didn't give away my age there. Carol and her husband Doran moved to Downey in 1978 with their two children, Kaylee and Jamie. As a Downey resident of 44 years, Carol has been and still is actively involved in her community. She has been involved with several nonprofits, serving in various capacities, including president and chair of Gangs Out of Downey, Parks and Rec Commission, Sir Optimist International of Downey, and the Downey Coordinating Council. From volunteering, Carol was hired as a part-time Keep Downey Beautiful KDB Coordinator in 1994, beginning her career with the city of Downey. After two and a half years as a part-time employee, she was promoted to full-time KDB Coordinator in 1998, a position that she has held until now. Just as a side note, four years ago, as I was preparing prior to coming here to Downey, I studied the organizational chart of public works. As I was looking over the administration division, I noticed a KDB Coordinator position. So I thought to myself, what on earth is a KDB Coordinator? I probably didn't say it that politely then, but honestly, I was a bit intimidated that I would have to supervise a position that I was not remotely familiar with. So all of my previous cities, in fact, most cities don't have a position that's remotely close or similar to a KDB or a cleanup coordinator. So I just assumed that it had something to do with environmental programs. Little did I know that aside from managing the different environmental programs, and there were many, KDB Coordinator was the catch-all position for everything else that the Public Works Director didn't want to deal with. So luckily for me, Carol knew what a KDB Coordinator was supposed to do, and she was the consummate KDB Coordinator. She not only managed the city's solid waste collection and recycling services contracts, but she also organized KDB cleanup events, used oil collection and recycling days, paper shredding, e-waste, battery collection events, mulch giveaway, tree giveaways, and she even oversaw the installation of trash bins and recycled furniture at city parks. One thing I really liked about working with Carol these past four years was that Carol never shied away from challenges and taking on new responsibilities. More recently, I asked her to plan and coordinate the city's annual Arbor Day celebrations and to help out with the first-ever Touch a Truck event. All this she did successfully with minimum supervision and unbridled enthusiasm. Everything I asked her to do, she got done. On a more personal level, it has certainly been a pleasure and joy to work with Carol these past four years. There are two things, though, that I will definitely miss when she retires. First, I will miss trash talking with her every morning. And second, I will miss her laughing at my recycled jokes. Get it? Trash talk, recycled jokes. Sorry, KDB humor. Seriously, Carol is not only a great and wonderful employee, she is truly a pillar in the community. Her whole career, in fact, her whole life was about public service. Congratulations, 24 years of great service to the Downey community, and best wishes on your retirement, Carol.
You know, it's just been really an honor to be able to work for the city of Downey. Downey really is a special place. Being the Keep Downey Beautiful Coordinator was really easy because Downey has so many volunteers that they made my job easy, and they made all the projects that Keep Downey Beautiful was able to complete. So I feel very, very fortunate. I just want to thank the city staff, the city council, Delfino the last four years, city manager. I've had a tremendous amount of support, and I just, I'm just a very lucky person. I live in Downey, so I'm not going away, but I am definitely taking a break. So thank you so very much for everything. Lot of memories. Thank you. And this is my grandson, Luca. Okay. And...
And for the next presentation, it's a proclamation, Play Ball MLB and U.S. Conference of Mayors Program. And I will have Jason Chacon come up and assist with this one. Okay. So I have here a proclamation, Play Ball. And this proclamation is made to encourage our youth to play softball and baseball. So it reads, "Whereas in 2015, Major League Baseball and the United States Conference of Mayors joined to launch Play Ball. And this year, the city of Downey has decided to join this great initiative. And whereas this initiative focuses on the sport of baseball and encourages sustained participation in the sport for years to come. And whereas the mayor's Play Ball Initiative's purpose is to reach kids who do not usually play baseball and strengthen the connection with those who are currently involved in the game. And whereas these couple of years have been traumatic and challenging for our youth, and this initiative of baseball fans and camaraderie is to help Downey's youth heal from the effects of the pandemic. Now therefore, I, Mayor Blanca Pacheco, call upon all parents, guardians, and youth organizations to recognize and encourage participation in the Play Ball Initiative to help lead the charge in bringing back baseball and softball to our city's youth and help make a positive impact in their lives. Signed, June 2022, by Mayor Blanca Pacheco."
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This is a national campaign going on to get kids more involved in our open space and be active as we come back from COVID. So we have some other activities that are going to be planned throughout the year. So please stay tuned to our social media for some events that we'll be having encouraging kids to get out and be active.
Thank you.
And our last presentation is by our Downey Youth Commission. So if I could have Isaac and Sam, please join me. They will be providing a presentation for us all today.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Commissioner Sam Sarafin, and here with me is Commissioner Isaac Donato. As you may know, the Downey Youth Commission 2022 to 2023 term has come to an end. And we thought it would be a good opportunity to share an update video, as it has been two years since our last update. We will now show the video.
Good evening, city council. Despite the COVID-19 pandemic, the Downey Youth Commission has been very busy these last two years. And here's an update as to what we have done. The Downey Youth Commission was formed in 2011. Good evening, city council. Despite the COVID-19 pandemic, the Downey Youth Commission has been very busy these last two years. And here is an update as to what we have done. As way of background, the Downey Youth Commission was formed in 2011 with 15 members and with the goals of leadership development, civic and local government education, providing input to the city council regarding youth issues, and the completion of annual assignments and priorities of the city council. The commission meets once a month to discuss city council meetings, volunteer opportunities, and upcoming events. During these meetings, the commission also receives a presentation from a city department to learn more about what they do.
Regarding volunteer opportunities, in the last two years, the commission has volunteered nearly 270 hours at various city events, including brunch with the bunny, COVID-19 food drives, home decorating contests, candy crawl, one day of service, and pumpkin patch, to name a few. In addition to these volunteer opportunities, the commission focused on key initiatives. The commission prepared the Bennett Campaign video to help promote the importance of throwing away your trash and keeping Downey looking beautiful. Letters to seniors were prepared to share words of support and encouragement to seniors in the community during the pandemic. They were distributed during senior meal pickup and delivery at BJR to 150 seniors.
A key project of the Downey Youth Commission is the annual Student Government Day. Last year, the commission prepared a video about city operations and history on the social media channel for Student Government Day. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, we cannot meet in person. However, this year, the commission was able to hold an in-person Student Government Day to record numbers over 70 students attended, representing four different schools. The program was modified to allow the students to hold a mock city council meeting as they presented their ideas to the city. We look forward to expanding the program in the future. A new initiative this year was the Downey Period Plan. The commission was approached by the Downey Period Plan Group to discuss menstrual products at city facilities. The two groups came together and created a plan to provide menstrual product kits at key city facilities and to make them available to females who were unsuspectively in need of one. Lastly, mental health is an important cause for the youth commission. The commission shared a video regarding mental health and resources for Downey teams on its social media channel. The commission also accepted the proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month. Also, we wanted to remind the public that the Downey Youth Commission launched its Instagram page in 2019. We currently have 235 followers, with some of our videos and posts receiving 300 views and over 100 likes. If you haven't done so already, please follow us at Downey.YC.
Being a part of the Downey Youth Commission is a rewarding experience and a great way to give back to the community. The city is currently accepting applications for the 2022-2023 term. Interested Downey teams should submit an application to Downey City Hall by July 15th at 4:00 p.m. We look forward to seeing the new commissioners. This concludes our update. And the Downey Youth Commission would like to give a special thank you to the city council and staff for their continual support and listening to the needs of the youth. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to show our video, and thank you for your support.
Madam Mayor? If you don't mind, I want to thank Vanya De Rojas, who was the coordinator, who actually worked with these young, bright people. Vanya, can you come up and say a couple of words? That's important, I think, for us to recognize Vanya. She's the one that really coordinated a lot of this. Vanya, thank you.
So the Downey Youth Commission, as mentioned, does represent the youth in the community and provides feedback as to what the needs are. I'm very honored to work with these students. Every year, they come together and provide amazing ideas and inputs as to what their really needs are in the community. And so I'm really proud of Sam and Isaac today in doing their presentation. They truly do a lot of this on their own. That video, they really led that and did everything. So they are true leaders in the community, and I'm looking forward to what they do in the future.
And I know we already thanked her, but I also want to thank Vanya, who meets with the Downey Youth Commissioners. She meets with them on a monthly basis and goes over different ideas and different topics. But to our Downey Youth Commissioners, our future leaders, thank you. Sam goes to Downey High School. He just graduated from Downey High School, actually, and will be attending Cal State Long Beach in the fall. And like I previously mentioned, Isaac attends St. Matthias Academy, or PMA. It's a lot easier to remember, PMA. But he is going to be entering his senior year. He's on student body, and he will be president. And one day, he plans on being mayor of the city of Downey. So let's also give him a round of applause. And thank you all again for joining us here this evening. We're now going to get started with our council meeting. If you need to leave, you can do so right now. But we'll get started. Thank you. Thank you. I will now take public comment on agenda, non-agenda, and consent calendar items. Before we begin the public comment period, I would like to remind members of the public that the city's meeting rules contained in the Downey Municipal Code prohibit any conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Copies of the meeting rules are located in the back of the chambers. The City Council acknowledges the right of the public to address issues that are within the city's jurisdiction and invites the public to do so during the City Council meeting. However, this right must be balanced with the need of the City Council to conduct the public business in a fair and efficient manner, free from disruption or disturbance. Members of the audience who wish to address City Council during public comment are reminded that the city's meeting rules prohibit yelling, whistling, booing, screaming, and any other outbursts that disrupts or disturbs a meeting, any conduct that interferes with or disrupts persons who are addressing the City Council, any conduct that interferes with or disrupts council members while they are speaking, and any other conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Members of the audience violating the city's meeting rules after fair warnings shall be removed from the council chambers. I remind the audience that pursuant to Penal Code Section 403, it is a misdemeanor for any person to willfully disturb or break up a public meeting. Those violating Penal Code Section 403 may be cited accordingly. Unless modified by the mayor, each speaker shall have four minutes to address the council regarding agenda, non-agenda, and consent calendar items. Pursuant to the Downey Municipal Code, the public comment period is limited to 30 minutes. I remind speakers that your comments are to be addressed to me and not to any other council or staff member. City Clerk Duarte, have you received any written correspondence to be incorporated into the record?
Yes, Mayor, we have. The first correspondence is from Kevin Essing. Dear Nuance Populi, what makes art and all that it encompasses so compelling? Art inspires the unignited soul and has the power to heal ailments of a non-physical kind. Art is one of the best ways to bring a community together around any topic or cultural ethos. Art offers the catalytic spark for tourist commerce to revitalize a community. Art provides an outlet for those who can express their dire needs through conventional modes of communication. I say all this to say that I fully support Alistair Hunter and the Downey Arts Coalition in calling for the city of Downey to take a hard look at supporting the arts within the 2022-2023 budget. When catastrophe strikes, like this latest pandemic, art is usually the mistress that we lean on, feeding from her rich well of resources until we have the strength to go back out into the world. When all is calm again, we ghost her and act as if she didn't see us through the roughest points in our lives. Don't let Downey be that kind of community. Downey has much raw talent. I don't think you'll regret it. Sincerely, one of many purple foxes. The next correspondence is from Kimberly Tinajero. Mayor Pacheco, I am so happy that you are going to Sacramento. Now we can watch as the FBI arrests you at the Capitol. That is going to be a lot more exciting than here in Downey. Seriously, you can't even follow state law, but you are going to write it? How's that going to work? Is your crime boss Rick Olivares writing it for you? Because you have horrible presentation skills. We know someone passes the bar for you because you don't follow the law. Your campaign was paid by water and school privatizers? You are literally worse than Christina Garcia. So funny getting endorsements by the unions, yet you're going to continue Christina Garcia's attempt to privatize. You are bad. You are a big toxica. You are the worst Mayor Downey has ever had. Even Frometa doesn't like you because you are corrupt. You should just save yourself and toss Trujillo under the bus, who's a narco procurador like they have in other countries. You people are bad for Downey. Never mind ojos locos, we have to focus on you people. City Council without ethical limits. Bad for Downey, engaging in conflict of interest behavior. Just leave the city like leave us. Have some respect for the stipend you people earn from our tax dollars. And the last correspondence is from Gustavo Franklin. As a longtime Downey resident, I thought it was important that our community know the lies being projected by Blanca Pacheco. I found in well-crafted video my daughter had shared with me where Blanca is claiming she wants to be known as a person who helped make a difference, a good listener. Well, that's all bullshit. She claims these things only during elections. When push comes to shove, she denies the hard-working poor a 45-day moratorium. It seems the younger generation are more critical-minded and fearless, like my daughter. Because of this, I was able to look and research those public record video from November 2019. Shame on you, Blanca. You are a grifter and a fraud, and I truly do not know how you could look at yourself in the mirror. How many people actually in Downey know of your refusal to help the less fortunate, the renters? It is a known fact, Downey is a city of renters, not homeowners, yet you refuse to help the majority. Your decision was hostile and cannot be undone. I hope people are listening and pay attention. You genuinely do not put the people's interests first. This isn't an opinion, this is a sad fact. Our community needs to stop supporting sellout candidates like you just because they have a D or R next to their name. Gustavo. That is all, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
This is more addressed to a city attorney. I understand, I mean, people are going to come in here and talk nonsense. It's what I signed up for, apparently. But why do they get to email me and email this? Is that part of our charter? I would like to cut this out. If residents want to come in here and talk this kind of nonsense, they should get in line like the rest of these people do, instead of just hiding behind their computer. Ms. Tinajero, she doesn't even live here. So is this mandatory, or can we vote to get rid of these? Again, and to our residents, you have my phone number, you have my email. You have any concerns? Call me. But I shouldn't have to be here and putting up with this unless they come here and line up and say it to my face. So what's the status, and can we get rid of this?
I can look into it. It's my understanding that it's a practice to read all the public correspondence that comes into the City Council for part of the City Council Agenda, to read it during the meeting. We can look at where that practice comes from and what is appropriate. But typically, anyone from the public can email you their opinions and statements or whatever they think is appropriate to send to their elected officials, whether it relates to agenda item, whether it's about the agenda or public correspondence for the agenda. We can look at what the practices are and what makes sense.
Thank you. And again, nothing in here was constructive. I mean, some guy's writing about art, and people just want to talk smack. I have no problem with that. You could come in here and talk smack, but if you're going to do it, come and say it to my face. Thank you.
And if I remember correctly, we had actually voted on reading, after the pandemic, we had voted to read all emails into public records. This was done after the pandemic, and if the council wants to, we can always revisit this practice. But this was actually started after the pandemic, and it was voted in by, actually, the council.
Yeah, I do remember voting on that. Okay, if we can agendize email comments. Again, I'm not seeing anything constructive by this. It's a waste of my time. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker? Or first speaker?
These are the thoughts of an unborn child. Mommy, keep me safe. Mommy, keep me warm. Handle me with your love. Mommy, keep me from harm. I'm only six weeks old today. This birthday gift to me, a pair of big brown eyes that someday you will see. I barely got ears, a little puppy nose, and at the end of my feet, little things called toes. Looking forward to my life, toys, teddy bears, snails, and long fairy tales. Where are we going, mommy? In a bath, on a bus ride, or perhaps far away? Where are we going being pushed at all force? How funny it seems passing through doors, people dressed in green. If they hurt you, mommy, just scream. What's happening, mommy? I'm starting to cry. Mommy, come quickly. They're making me die, killing me quickly, pulling me apart, everything inside of me, even my heart. Bye, mommy. Goodbye. But how I wanted to see the grass, the trees, hear a sweet song, feel a sweet breeze. Bye, mommy. Goodbye. I love you. I really do. I just wish you could love me too.
Getting things in and out of his mouth and putting them on the podium.
Abortion is unnatural. It violates a woman's own natural maternal instinct. Why a woman would submit to the will of an abortionist to kill her unborn child is beyond my comprehension.
Can we pause this for a second? Pause just a second. Sir, we can't have you putting stuff in your mouth and putting it onto the podium.
We're going to have to wipe the podium.
Can we sanitize the podium before the next speaker comes up?
Don, hold on a second. So let's just let everybody speak. If you want to take a seat and just come up when you see a spot open, you can do that so you don't have to stand in line. We can discuss in the future if you want to have a system by which people can come up. But those in line, if you want to take a seat and just come up when the podium is empty, that's fine. We'll make a call for you to come up. If you want to just stand because you want to stretch your legs, that's fine, too.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker.
So, ladies and gentlemen, we heard earlier today regarding Solomon. And to no offense, why God hates homosexuality in the book of Romans and Deuteronomy, I stand by that. Oh, my God. God is listening. And so the purpose, I think, of God's message behind homosexuality is that God hates homosexuality. And unfortunately, it's something that some faggots like to contribute that God likes. No offense, but it's true. I mean, I'm not offended by people calling me a fucking faggot. No, I'm not. Because behind it all, it's a potential fact that maybe, or potentially, that I'm an LGBT faggot, like the rest of us believe, that we're all equal in God's eyes, like the little girl talked about in her sermon today about Solomon. So again, you know, mommy, the mayor, doesn't realize that, again, I say it over and over, unpleasant sharp attacks in government and public officials, adding that the language of political arena is often abusive. It's true. Very true. Matter of fact, some asshole from The Patriot in this article described individuals as, I call those instigators, local terrorists. Now, I find that offensive, not only because I'm a fucking faggot like the rest of us fucking faggots, but the fucking faggot writes it in The Patriot, Thursday, May 22nd, 26, I'm sorry, 2022 for the record, right here. And then some fat lady happened to say, yeah, I echoed the sentiments of that. Well, the fat lady is a racist. She don't know shit about the First Amendment. Just a big fat mouth from Kaiser. That's what she is. Big fat mouth. And as far as the other Assembly lady, she don't know shit. She's just a puppet on strings. La da la da la, la da la da. That's why she got upset and kicked me out at the 5:30 meeting because she interrupted me regarding our claims, liability claims, and there were two of them. And she used the force of the police to escort me out while I was at the podium. You don't do that fucking shit. You do not do that fucking shit, mayor. Either you're fucking stupid, which we already know, and for an Assembly person, you're definitely a fucking idiot when it comes to the First Amendment. You don't demand that we listen by your rules. We go by the rules of the Brown Act. We go by the rules of the First Amendment. We go by the rules of the California Constitution and what the DOJ, our civil rights, protect us under. Not this fucking fake news by The Patriot calling me a terrorist. Yeah, I use a lot of fuck. Fuck you bitch, fuck you cunt, fuck you twat, fuck America, fucking everything's all fucked up in this world. Inflation's fucked up. The world's fucked up. Racism's fucked up. The police are fucked up. The sheriff is fucked up. Everything is fucked up. The DA's fucked up. Your asshole council people are fucked up. So fix the fucking problem and stop being assholes, which you are. The Ninth Circuit overturns threats against Obama. So I'm turning in all these.
Thank you, Mr. Herman.
Once again. Thank you, mommy.
Thank you, mommy.
I live on Pico Vista here in Downey. I've been here the last two council meetings, and we just wanted to let that go.
Just die. And we talked to the police chief, and she says they're working on it. But we have another concern also. On between Telegraph Road and Florence Avenue, along the San Gabriel Riverbed, there is a surface road there that they use for bicycles and for walking and everything. And it's grown up along the sides in tumbleweeds that's taller than me. They're all dried up. It's a fire hazard. I went to the fire station on Paramount Station 3, and the captain there told me they don't do prevention inspections anymore. They're just a reactionary force now. I didn't know that was, and I found out they closed the station on Florence Avenue. But the problem is, we got a homeless problem down there in that area. Underneath the freeway bridge, there is trash everywhere. I think Public Works and the fire chief and the police need to do an inspection down there. It's really gotten bad. We've had gunshots at night. There's a homeless guy that carries a samurai sword, his backpack up and down the riverbed. There's a girl that's, she's not mentally well, but you can tell by just looking at her, and she carries a knife up the sleeve of her sweatshirt. She's pulled it out, and she's been shaking at things that's not there, you know? There's nobody behind her. But someday, somebody may be behind her. Someone's going to get hurt, or someone's going to get killed if they don't clean that mess up. It's all ours, a day and night. The police was out there along with the fire department about three weeks ago when they set some tires on fire underneath that freeway bridge. Santa Fe Springs and Downey Police and fire departments both showed up. But my neighbor came up here tonight, and we've had a real problem. Some of the neighbors have even said they might move because the situation. because of the situation there. I guess when Claudia made her earlier statements about some of the people from Pico Vista, I see that we're not the only ones complaining. And it's gotten to be bad. You need to go down that service road and just see, take a look for yourself. I called the Public Works, not the Public Works, the flood control people in Southgate that's in charge of the flood control channel there. And he told me that his men will not work in that area because they have been threatened with knives, and they've been, had stones thrown at them, rocks thrown at them. I said, so you're just gonna let it go? He said, yeah. And I said, you know, how are we gonna get cleaned up? They've cut holes in the chain link fence that's along that flood control channel. He said they locked the gates, and they break the gates. They break the locks off the gates. And, you know, they control the area. They've taken over that area. And they've made our life in that area hell. And Caltrans along the freeway there, they've let it all grow up, and they're up in there camping. And, you know, if you, people would just take a ride down that service road and see what is, take a look at it. This has really gotten to be a part, a bad part of Downey. Okay, that's about all I got to say.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I guess.
Yes, who would we be, who can you reach out to or speak with regarding that?
First of all, let me, first of all, thank you for coming. A couple of things. One is, one is that we've actually been in communication with the county on this. It's a level of frustration for us as well because they're not patrolling some of the areas that they need to patrol. We've also communicated with Caltrans. I'll get together with our police chief and our homeless outreach folks as well, make sure that we get out there and address some of those issues. And I will tell you, one of the things that we've been working on is trying to get a ranger patrol program created in that area so that there's people constantly up and down there patrolling that area. This item is not on the agenda, so I can't go back and forth with you on this thing. We've, we heard you, and I'll work with our police chief to make sure that we get some people out there.
Okay, we can't go back and forth.
And I'd like, Madam Mayor, to just add, not only the Pico Vista between Telegraph and Florence, but also Florence and Firestone. I think all that segment of Pico Vista needs to be looked at.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hi, first of all, I would like to say thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. My name is Janice Richardson. I work at Kaiser Permanente Hospital Regional Independence Park. I'm a clerk in ICC Home Health Care Department. I am here to urge you to pass the health care worker's minimum wage as an ordinance. For the past two years, my colleagues and I have been on the front line of this pandemic. From the beginning, we have showed up for care for patients despite the high risk of infections, emphasis, 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 protective gear. That's PPE. And also, the long hours we have worked. Now, we're dealing with mental traumas in our colleagues. And what I'm here today is to let you know that we are underpaid and too many are struggling to afford housing and the cost of living and also other basic needs, while our employer are making record profits. I've seen coworkers leave their jobs, and others are starting to leave as well. This leaves us understaffed and overworked. And why I'm here today is very important. I have coworkers that is burnt out and work in fear due to the safety, it's not safety on the job. Understaffed, we have workers that cleans rooms, and the rooms are not cleaned properly due to the understaffing. And also, in home health, we have a policy that once patients are discharged from the hospital, we must contact them within 48 hours to see them so they will not have to be re-entered back in the hospital. That is not happening. Patients are not being seen in a timely manner. And also, I just want to urge you, please, to pass the, or to pass the Minimum Wage Act as an ordinance, because we really need this. Due to the short staffing and the mental concerns that's going on, we have employees that cannot call in due to there's no staffing. And they want to take care of the patients, but they cannot call in because management is not giving them life balance, time to be off and to care for themselves and their loved ones. And so what, I just want to thank you and for giving me this opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Hello, good night. Thank you. I'm short. My name is Valma Levis. I've been living in Downey 20-plus years. I've worked for Kaiser Downey almost 30 years. Worked for one of the departments in the Orchard Medical Office. And I just really, truly urge you to, please, pass the healthcare worker's minimum wage ordinance. Due to the short staff, I know the emergency rooms really be impacted due to the clinic being so short-staffed. Just the long hours, we've been at the front line for two years. And it's been tough. It's been tough, and there's no time off because unfortunately, a lot of people still have COVID. And so it's, if the ordinance is passed, I think a lot of people would stay because a lot of our coworkers, like we said, they are leaving. And there's just no opportunity. It's, it's tough. But we really hope you think about it and really pass it for us. And just that way we can stay on. And we love Downey and just try to do the best for our patients here in Downey. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. My name is Virginia Rivas, and I'm here representing the Assistance League of Downey. I'd like to read a brief letter that my board directed me to write to the district of Downey regarding the parklets. Dear Mr. Fritz and members of the board, we are writing to you as longstanding businesses in downtown Downey to express our concerns regarding the current situation on Downey Avenue as it pertains to the area known as parklets. While we understand, and in fact, help to support neighboring businesses, restaurants, and bars in their efforts to utilize these spaces during the height of the pandemic, we believe it is now time to discontinue them for the following reasons. They're no longer necessary as businesses now have the ability to provide indoor seating for their customers. They are unsightly and detract significantly from the appearance of our downtown area. They block the visibility of other neighboring businesses from view as customers and potential customers drive down the street. And they take up valuable parking spaces, which are already at a premium, especially given the current and continuing development in the area. For the above reasons, we and the other downtown Downey businesses, which are located on the letter, I won't go through them, respectfully request that the Downtown Downey Improvement Association recommend to the Downey City Council that the approval for parklets be withdrawn and businesses currently utilizing them be notified of such and given a reasonable time to remove them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lee Squire, Vietnamese veteran, residential water rate payer and voter. Retired City of Brea employee, auditor fraud examiner and financial services manager for 31 years. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. And residential and business water rate payers, Downey Patriot, the Downey Latino, and the Herald American. Subject: Central Basin Municipal Water District lawsuit, illegal fixed meter charge, Brown Act closed session, and regular session. After 31 years with the City of Brea, I would say, my attorney would always say, attorney clamp privilege on every lawsuit we were ever served, and we could not discuss it in the public. I perceive this to mean not subject to disclosure at a regular city council meeting before we, the people. I found out after 31 years from another law firm that lawsuits are a matter of the public record and can be a receive and file, or receive and inform means on a regular public agenda. CBMD lawsuit, illegal fixed meter charge. Assistant City Manager John Askewy was one of the three appointed board members on CBMW Board. Askewy was appointed to represent the cities that were covered by CBWD. Askewy appears to have had the lead in pursuing the illegal fixed meter charge based upon evidence that I have attached. All three appointed members voted yes over letters of opposition from cities, mutual water companies, et cetera. However, I see no letter of opposition from the city of Downey. Letters of opposition from the first, I have letters, these letters are from the First Amendment and restated supplemental petition. As to Downey, the illegal fixed meter charge would have been either paid out of the water rates of the combined water rate payers or would have been borne by each of us as an increase in our water rates. Did even one council member ask for this lawsuit slash summons be presented at a regular council meeting so that we, the people, the water rate payers had a right to know about this? Thank God for Signal Hill's lawsuit, which included the city of Downey as a named plaintiff. Thank God for the city of Signal Hill for suing all seven board members, including Askewy. I'm asking for those, of those of you water rate payers to review, who are attorneys, to review the attached information that I have, and you draw your own conclusions as both a residential water rate payer and a voter. Is it the deliberation of lawsuits in closed sessions that's confidential, not the subject substance of a lawsuit that should have been and always should have been a public record? I also plan to bring this to the attention of the Brea City Council. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good evening. Lot of issues, lot of issues. And we have campaign season coming up, and we're gonna have to scrutinize candidates' positions in spite of what they say. We know the Democrat Party has policies in place that are the reason these things are happening, especially at the riverbed. These are George Gascon's type of policies to release people mentally ill or not. I ask everybody on the city council to stand up and publicly support the recall of George Gascon, the George Soros-funded DA, George Gascon. And we need candidates that are gonna overturn Proposition 47 in this state, which was written by George Gascon and Gavin Newsom. And not one Democrat has proposed to overturn that. Okay? The Democrats have defunded the police in spite of what they say. Whether at this council or any other council, they were lockstep in defunding our police and creating a criminal's paradise here. That's what they've done. And we're also paying $7 a gallon of gasoline. Why are we paying $7 a gallon of gasoline? Well, we have candidates that are proposing to cut off the state gas tax. But the Democrats had three opportunities in the assembly to stop the gas tax. And every single one of them, every single time, voted to keep the gas tax and not give the drivers of this state a break on their paying gasoline taxes. Why do we do that? We follow these climate change cultists. That's what they are. They hate fossil fuels. Instead of learning about the virtues of fossil fuels in our history, fossil fuels create cleaner water, cleaner air, and a more durable and safe society. But they demonize it. They demonize it. Oh, yeah, go buy an electric car. Well, that doesn't work, folks, sorry. And it's a group called the Citizens Climate Lobby, a very influential couple. The Riveros, they're always having a platform either in the fake news Downey Patriot or in council meetings here, or they're receiving awards for their volunteerism and their activism. They are glad that we're paying $7 a gallon of gasoline. They want us to pay $9 a gallon of gasoline. No, thank you. And the LGBT mental health or mental illness, we've heard from a notable American here, maybe a little crudely talking about homosexuality. But I'm gonna say one thing. I've looked up some of the things they were saying, talking about the rainbow flag. You can't mock God. God provided the rainbow that he wouldn't destroy the earth ever again by a flood. So what you're doing is mocking him. You can't mock God. And in Romans, it was brought up, I looked it up. Romans 1:28 says, "God has given them over to a depraved mind." Not only those who practice such things, but those who give hearty approval. So if we're gonna have values, we don't want the West Hollywood values either to come in here. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and the City Council. My name is Brandon Sanghili, and I'm a resident of Downey. The topic for my comment tonight is about City Council Member and Mayor Pro Tem Catherine Alvarez. As some people may have heard, some of the members of the recall are continuing to collect signatures to hold a special election to have Alvarez recalled so we can have stability and respect that the city of Downey deserves. We already know her reasons as to why she deserves to be recalled in regards to her failure to admit to the voters about her criminal past and her lack of transparency to the city. But I'm gonna add a few more reasons as to why she needs to be recalled. The first reason why she needs to be recalled is that while people are protesting against Ojo's locals from coming to our city, she wanted to add Sean Burials from the Hustler magazine into the city's planning commission. Again, while most teachers and parents were protesting against a strip bar from opening in our city, she wanted to appoint someone from a pornographic magazine company as a planning commissioner. And to add on to that, instead of voting yes to choose Mario Guerra or Mr. LaPlante into the District 2 for city council, she'd rather have Patrick Owens from the planning commission into the city council. Let me remind all parents and teachers that Patrick Owens, the chair of the planning commission, was one of the three commissioners who voted to allow Ojo's locals to come into our city near a local high school, near a chase bank, next to a local grocery store, and behind a senior residence home. Not to mention that Alvarez has yet to release a statement of whether she's for or against this establishment from opening in our city, even though I've seen the other three council members express their disappointment on Ojo's locals, but Alvarez hasn't. And I think, in my opinion, I think Alvarez has secretly offered Ojo's locals coming to our city, and she's afraid to admit it. Which leads me to my next reason why she needs to be recalled. In October 2021, Alvarez was in a podcast called Caliente Girls with a K. And she said some things that were true in the beginning, but most of the stuff she said were disinform and offensive. I have a screen recording of a sentence she said that I find offensive as someone who's been living in the city my whole life. So with that, I'll play it, and then I'll continue talking.
To be honest with you, I never thought that my city was so racist.
So, Ms. Alvarez thinks the city is racist. I find that offensive as someone who's been raised in this city, graduated from a Downey Unified High School, recently graduated from a community college and is about to transfer to university this fall while still living in the city of Downey. Ms. Alvarez, you're a disgrace to the city and the community, and I hope you get recalled. And Madam Mayor Pacheco, you chose to have her as your mayor pro tem. And with all due respect, I don't want, I'm not gonna vote for you for state assembly. I encourage all voters of District 3 to sign the petition to recall Catherine Alvarez. And to the rest of the voters, make sure this November, we do not send Mayor Pacheco to Sacramento to represent us. Vote for Raul Ortiz Jr. for state assembly because if Alvarez isn't recalled and Pacheco wins in November, we could have the first incarcerated mayor for the city of Downey. And that's the last thing we need. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
First of all, thank God for Pride Month. I often speak about the denounced Pride Month that moderated Downey City Council member this choice of the traditional values by current President Joe Biden, who keeps blaming Oputons for inflation and repeating that he did not cause any inflation. Though every one of you knows that it cannot be hidden. I believe that is not only me, but many Americans, including Downey committee members, would know what we are suffering from. Don't you want to build up our committee? Don't you want to build up our committee, not tearing down what we have? Since my children come to Downey Library several times a week, I heard about what Downey City raised up the rainbow flag, so I brought my rainbow mask to remember the original meaning of the rainbow, the promise of God. To make short of my speech, I hope that you may turn down your previous decisions regarding LGBT Pride Month, Pride Month picnics, and the flag, because you, the ones to be blamed in the future, like Joe Biden, that you did what you did, destroying our county committee. And don't you want Health Committee, as you support various youth activities, including committee members' activities? But why are you spending our tax to cause more problems upon youths? Because I'm enjoying the Pride Month with LGBTFJB, I would say only three letters. Let's go, Brandon.
Mike Greenspan, the Jew not going back to Florida, you anti-Christ Catholics. I'm gonna be Nixonian and make myself perfectly clear. After all, let Councilmember Alvarez call Downey racist, and I can point at the Burbank where the Haryneers made that anti-Semitic comment on city property during, umpiring city baseball games. Isn't that wonderful? Now, as far as our city manager, or Downey City Manager leaving, Gilbert Levas, let me put a quote from Mitchell Englander, BP, before prison, when he said to Wayne Spindler, "You'll be missed by nobody." The only time I've ever agreed with that criminal. Now, why didn't we just get Janice Gueye, our Assistant City Manager, to fill in? Oops. I guess he's got some problems, to say the least. And as far as that letter about Blanca Pacheco and going to prison, I'm not prejudiced. I don't care if she goes to the Martha Stewart Prison in West Virginia or the Teresa Gadisi Prison in New Jersey. I am not prejudiced. She just doesn't belong in a country club prison like Mitch Englander. But when you know the right people, and you're part of Englander and Schnop, whatever that, Kanabi, Englander and Kanabi, you have special influence. And by now, he's already out. I think he was in a halfway house after four months in Long Beach. Now, some good news, a couple of people that gave to Englander, lost. That faggot from City of LA, Ron Galperin, wow, he can take his 11% statewide to the runoff. And that fat pig, Paul Coretts, endorsed by Kant Han, lost. But of course, I didn't see him on the record, not lost, he's lagging. After 32 years in politics, he got less than 25% of the vote, and a guy named Mejia, Kenneth Mejia, got over 40% of the vote. And a guy named Kevin James, KKK, and he's gay, Kevin James, from Board of Public Works, now in private practice, he won't be city attorney in LA. He gave to Englander also. And when you hear those Caruso commercials, remember, each and every time Rick Caruso had a chance to give to Englander, he gave the maximum amount by law. I mean, I really wanna believe him about corruption, but I'd rather go to a rally against prostitution led by Reverend Jimmy Swaggart, and maybe even a marital fidelity rally by Mark Sanford, or Newt Gingrich, or John Ensign, you know, those typical Christian-type of politicians that wanna, you know, Jesus, Jew boy that swung a hammer. These Christian men swing their Peters into the other woman. Of course, of course. Speaking of Jesus, he never had brunch with the bunny, only a Last Supper. And if he were to go to Tebow's Tim O'Quana Country Club at Christmas, Tim Tebow would bodily throw him from the dining room, because he's Jewish. I'm sorry, Mr. Christ, Christmas dinner is only for our Christian members at this club. And you hear Tebow always talk about Jesus. Well, oh, speaking of things, the library has some revisionist history on it. It was not finished November 2020, as the plaque misstates. It was finished June 2021. I even noticed Donald LaPlante was on the Oversight Committee. Too bad he didn't oversee that one and have them put true history instead of revisionist history.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers, and Mr. Levas and staff, good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, I want to say that I am not a racist and live in the city of Downey. I want to make that clear. I have a couple of issues. I will try to be brief, Madam Mayor. First one is that the government's primary purpose is to provide public safety for its individuals. We saw recently Chesa Boudin in San Francisco be ousted from his office, and it looks like the majority of voters that particular day decided that some of his extremist progressive policies was too much even for the citizens of San Francisco. And that leads me to Mr. George Gascon. Mr. Gascon's policies, too, tended to be, or most of them, or some of them anyway, tend to be very progressive. And there is a recall, as one of the gentlemen mentioned earlier, there is a recall effort in order to oust or recall petition to ouse Mr. Gascon. For those that think that Mr. Gascon's policies are or do not support public safety, would suggest that they go to the website, recalldageorgegascon.com, and sign up for the petition. According to one report, they need about 57,000 signatures remaining in order to put it on the ballot. They have until July the 7th, so those that might be interested, go to that website. The next item, Madam Mayor, is R E S P E C T, Respect. That's also the title of one of my favorite all-time songs sung by the Queen of Soul, Miss Aretha Franklin. Great song. Respect is something we need to give each other, except when those individuals, because of their actions or words, diminish that respect on their own. Want to refer to the Downey Clergy Council. That's an organization of different churches. Their common goal was to help the community, that simple, to help the community. And yet, we had some individuals that allegedly showed up at the meetings, which is their right to talk. However, they use vulgarity, which is their right to do so. But what it did is that it disrupted the meetings, and it created a situation where that coalition cannot exist in its current format. I think those people that created the problem are not worthy of respect. And since I have a few seconds left, I want to talk about Mr. Biden and our government, federal government. We are not on the right track with regards to Mr. Biden's policies. You know the list of problems he's facing, as anyone. What surprises me mainly is not about his policies, but he's not taking the time to correct them in midstream, especially with an election coming up. Madam Mayor, this ends my comments. I yield my remaining time back to you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Downey City Council. I came to Downey to support a Downey resident who is being illegally evicted from her home. We set up a table at 9539 Firestone Boulevard and had the opportunity of meeting many Downey residents, many who had questions about what we were doing there, and I told them that we were there to support the Downey community. Soon after, many people came to ask what we could do about unethical property managers and owners who were trying to evict them so they could raise their rents. This seems to be a trend, and in my opinion, this is a reason why there are so many unhoused people in the city of Downey. I find that there's a huge disconnect with the Downey City Council and the people. My question to you is, have you ever gone out to the community to talk to the, to talk to your constituents about what they're experiencing and how close they are to becoming homeless? There were many people, many people are also suffering emotional distress, and we're still in COVID, and COVID is surging. While we were in Downey, we had representatives like Councilwoman Catherine Alvarez, Martha Camacho, and Matthew Peters, who were there to support the community and people with housing problems. I understand that Catherine, Councilwoman Catherine Alvarez is being recalled, not once, but now twice. The first time, I believe they said it was gonna cost, it cost over, it cost over $20,000. I say, why don't we spend this good money for the people, not just the low-income people, but the middle class who are experiencing so many problems? I say to the people that whoever, whoever casts, whoever is not, whoever is without sin to cast the first stone, that's what God said, let's, let's stop being hypocrites and live and let live. Be fair and, and leave a good legacy to your community. If I was a city councilwoman, it would be my dream and desire to serve the people who voted you in. And as far as the public calling in by emails, it is not nonsense. It is a right of the people to communicate with their local representatives. I find that very offensive when somebody could try to violate the Brown Act. It's a right of the people to speak by email or to come in. There are many people that, that are not well, that are sick, and that have COVID, and maybe they're not able to, to come in, in person. Maybe they have to send an email. If I'm not feeling well, it's my right as a citizen to be able to come up. And para toda la comunidad hispana que está aquí, toda la gente debemos de juntarnos, de organizarnos, porque las rentas están muy caras, y si hay abusos en la comunidad, tenemos que unirnos y tenemos que venir a City Hall, y toda la gente que no ayuda a la comunidad deben de venir y debemos de juntarnos y hacer algo de este problema que las rentas están muy caras. And I, I disagree with you, Mayor Pacheco. We do need rent control. The middle class are no longer, it's no longer the low-income people, it's the middle class are suffering emotional distress because the rents are way too high. It's out of control, and gentrification is really terrible what's happening in this community. I saw it firsthand in the city of Downey, when I was out there giving people, giving water to the people who are homeless and becoming homeless. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so it's so hard to follow up with such a great speaker. So I think it's really clear that the community is hurting, and it was very disappointing to see that indeed, yes, the mayor went on the show for Mario Guerra, and she said she does not support rent control. And I notice, I notice that, this will be in the record, I notice that community members are very upset. They say, "How sad to see her side with landlords and ignore the actual community that lives here." Someone else says, "It's very sad to listen to a minority woman stepping over her own people." Yes, it's very sad. She's been doing it for a long time. I remember when Ms. Alvarez would come here with her neighbors in 2019 and basically trying to keep, you know, the whole community from being evicted right around Christmas time, and the entire council said no. Frometta said no, Pacheco said no, and the other ones that were on, you know, they didn't want it, they didn't want it. So that was egregious, that's because, yeah, you guys just don't care. You don't care, so, so you've committed that you're not gonna change in the State Assembly? So that's why I think that a lot of people are, they're, they're, they're like, oh, yeah, she got all that money, hence she got that 25%. And maybe Ortiz will win, I'm voting for Ortiz. Like, the Democratic Party, you're a member of the Democratic Party, Mr. Trujillo, everyone else who's a member of the Democratic Party, I don't know if the two of you are, Ms. Frometta, I don't know. But that party needs to go, it's totally corrupt. It's more corrupt than the Republican Party. We, if Ms. Pacheco gets in there, she needs to be removed in the next election. That's gonna be very important. So, but we have new people flooding in here. We have Mr. Mark Scott, very excited on his LinkedIn. He already says he's the interim city manager, and he isn't even up there. I'm very concerned about all of these locations where he's been, like, and there's even an article that says he's literally, quote, "A fixer." So that's concerning. When he was in Beverly Hills, he pushed to rent, to increase hotel taxes, so that's not gonna be good for the community when he tries to really put into overdrive here. There's this very interesting article where it talks about how the Burbank, when he was in Burbank, the, the council made him a monkey list, so, so they could check on his progress. So if there's gonna be a monkey list, that's literally what it calls it, if there's gonna be a monkey list here, I think it should be public, completely transparent, we want to know what the council is doing. There's also interesting things, like, oh, you guys should not be doing texts up there during the meeting. I totally agree with that. That should be a public record. Also requiring drug testing for members of the council, that's interesting. I think that, yeah, I mean, you guys are demanding that future candidates get, like, background checked, why don't we background check all of you people? Come on now. All right, so Mr. Scott is joined up there by Ms. Lauren Langer from BB&amp;K. Well, we remember BB&amp;K, don't we? From their settlement, settlement with the city of Bell, over $2 million. They got Bell into all that trouble. Their attorney, Ed Lee, who was Downey's attorney at the time, and then the city council had to dismiss him. So all that corruption that Levas and his predecessors were able to kind of hide, it's coming back, BB&amp;K, oh my gosh. So, no, down with corrupt attorneys, up with good attorneys like my attorney, who has sent a cease and desist letter to the Robert Garcia for blocking my comments on Twitter. No more attacks on the First Amendment. No to Robert Garcia.
Thank you, sir. It's never a dull moment. Okay, seeing that there's no further speakers, Senator Levas, did you want to make a comment?
No, I was just wanted to officially, I think that's their Lauren's and Mark's official welcome, so welcome.
You're the fixer, right? I like that. That was a compliment.
Yeah.
Seeing no other speakers, is there a motion to close public comment? Is there a second? It's ordered by the mayor. Now is, are you okay? The public comments, like...
I'm good.
He's good.
Now is the time for consent calendar items. Are there any council members that would like to remove or abstain from an item?
I'd like to remove item 15.
Thank you. Any other?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I need to abstain from the closed session meetings, the special meetings for May 3rd, May 10, May 17, and May 24.
Thank you. And City Clerk Duarte, are we pulling any of these minutes?
Yes, Mayor, we will be pulling the minutes for the special meeting of May 3rd at 5:30 PM, so that we can make a minor revision, and we will bring those back to the city council at the next meeting for approval.
And, Madam Mayor, I would also like to pull item number three.
Any other items? We have item number three and item number 15 that were pulled. Anything further? Okay, is there a motion and a second to approve the remainder of the consent calendar items? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Let's vote.
Second.
Let's vote.
Is that a, what is your vote, Councilman?
Yes.
Yes, okay. The consent calendar is approved with Councilmember Frometa pulling item number three for separate discussion, Councilmember LaPlante pulling item number 15 for separate discussion, and the special city council meeting minutes of May 3rd at 5:30 PM being pulled from the consent calendar.
Thank you. Okay, now we will first look at item number three, which was pulled by Councilmember Frometa. I'll hand it over to you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted, Mr. Kunsunji, if you can speak a little bit about the item number three, I know we are approving plans and specifications and authorized solicitation for construction bids for alleys north and south of Stewart and Gray, and this is part of the pavement rehabilitation capital improvement project. Now, are these only two alleyway, how many alleyways are we, are we looking at? I have the report, the report in front of me, but I needed your assistance on this.
Yes, Councilmember Frometa, so the two alleys in question here are the ones north and south of Stewart and Gray Road between Patton Road and Lakewood Boulevard. So this project will rehabilitate the asphalt pavement. We have already installed no parking in the alley signs to mitigate the, the parking issue, and we are, we have also installed streetlights on wood poles, LED fixtures, and we are closely monitoring the illegal dumping problem there in that area. So this is just the first year of the alley rehabilitation program, where we budgeted $300,000 this year. Next year, we're budgeting $500,000 for the next, next alleys that we will be working on.
And another question, I know it's, it's not on this particular report, but I know the last meeting, we did touch on, and correct my council colleagues if I'm mistaken, but we had discussed looking at a prioritization of alleys and, and where those alleys would be.
So, yeah, that is correct. So in the last six months, public work staff has already identified all the alleys in the city. We have driven and inspected those alleys, and we have come up with a 10-year program to prioritize which alleys will be done, and we are actually following that program. So that's how we came up with the first year, the second year, and the next three years for the five-year CIP.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kunsunji. I, I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. Councilmember LaPlante?
When I, when will we either be getting that report, or when did we get the report on the, the alleys, where they are and what the plan is? It may have come and I just wasn't on the council yet.
Delfino, go ahead.
Yeah, we can, we can provide a report regarding the, the alleys and the priority, prioritization that we came up with. We do have a map that goes with that, so we can provide that to the city council.
Yes, please, thank you, Delfino, thank you, Mr. LaPlante, for that.
Can we, is it, would, would it be too early to have it at the next council meeting?
No, actually, if you want it tomorrow or the next day, we can just email it to you all, so you have it.
Okay. Perfect.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
That's all, Madam Mayor.
Are any other questions? No? Okay. We can take a motion to approve this item.
I make a motion.
Is there a second?
Hi.
Okay, let's vote.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. And the next item that was pulled is item number 15. This has to do with the banners at the Downey Civic Theater, and I will hand it on over to Councilmember LaPlante for discussion.
When we talk about what we're going to spend our money on in arts, culture, and history, this may sound like it doesn't fall in that category, but it does. This is $50,000. Unfortunately, half of it goes to construction and putting them up and taking them down and scissor lifts, and I read the, read the report. So I would like to have us consider simply pushing this item forward and including it in our complete discussion of arts and culture, as opposed to another piecemeal, this, I looked as I came over, to me, they look like they could be serviceable for a few more months, and if we decide to not replace them, we're still going to unfortunately probably have to spend $15,000 to get all the scissor lifts to take them down. But I, I would prefer not to do all the piecemeal stuff and then just include this as a part of, what are we spending money on, on the theater and all the other arts and culture projects?
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
What I strongly suggest is that we, we move forward with this, obviously, the aesthetics, I, I think Councilmember Trillo, you've always said aesthetics are important, and I think the rest of the council has said that it matters. One of the things that we want to do is, and I think you're absolutely right, I think when you look at the total cost of what we spend on arts, whether it's AV systems, banners, the Tree of Life Fountain that's out there, the art pieces in the downtown, the, the programming that we do during the summers, concerts in the park, all of those things, those are all, you know, in the, in the art category, right? So I, I agree with you that those are things that we can do. Ultimately, though, I think it's important for us to, to make sure that we're moving, you know, the ball forward. We're not too far from getting you a report that includes, an inclusive report in terms of everything that we spend on arts. So I realize that that's something that is important to Mr. LaPlante, to make sure that we categorize and we capture everything. But this particular item, we know we have shows coming up, we know we have events coming up, and we want to make sure that we're always putting our best foot forward. So if you could see your way fit to moving this item forward, I think it would be beneficial to the theater and to the arts in general. It's, it's our front door, it's what people see.
Thank you. I did have a couple of questions. In the staff report, it says that we collected multiple quotes. How many quotes would that have been?
Jason?
We collected three quotes.
Are there any?
I have a question.
Councilmember Trillo?
Yes. I just wanted to express some, a couple residents reached out and said, have we considered murals of trying to find artists? Again, these are just ideas, okay? I did not come up with them. Perhaps residents, artists could submit murals, and then it'd be a committee who would decide which ones would go up. Another idea that was emailed to me was the use of immersive lighting, they called it, it's like
Yes.
art with
Yes.
like you project art and you can change it, and you could do things like that, so I thought they were interesting ideas, I just wanted to bring it out.
Sure, let me, if, if you don't mind, I can discuss some of those things. If you look at that building, it's a split-faced wall. So, so what that means is that there is, are crevices and cracks all over that building, right? So anything that you project on there, it doesn't really look very good because of the type of material that is, that's up there, and if you're going to
It's not smooth.
It's not smooth, thank you. And the other issue with murals, you're going to have the same problem, right, as you try to paint anything. The banners, we get, you know, we got four or five years out of them, and we can always change those out, and so you can pull them down and, and replace them quite readily. That's our biggest challenge with that building, it's kind of this bureaucratic beige box, right? And it doesn't have a smooth surface that you can do anything really unique on, so that's why we ended up going with the banners several years ago. Now, there are other ways to do immersive stuff, you know, potentially inside the facility that you can do that, and I think that one of the ideas that the subcommittee has had is looking at different art forms and how you would approach those different art forms, and there's going to be opportunities to, to do that. But primarily, the outside of that building is a really, really difficult building to work with, and that's why the banners were chosen in the first place.
Are there any further questions? No. And I have another question. Is there any way that we can continue using this, these banners, or are they in such poor shape that it's recommended we?
They're in really poor shape. There's about two or three of them that you can't even recognize what the design is anymore, and one of them's actually slightly torn, but before we had to pay for a lift to take it down, we would hope to replace it altogether.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay, is there a motion on this item to approve?
Second.
Okay, let's vote.
The motion is approved with Councilmember LaPlante voting no.
Okay, City Manager Levas, do you have any comments?
Madam Mayor, I, I really don't really have any comments, other than to say, you know, I know it's difficult for many of you as councilmembers to sit up here and take the barbs. Certainly, if you weren't a smart person, Madam Mayor, you wouldn't have gotten to the next phase in this election process, so I congratulate you as well as that, and it's always nice to know that we're probably highly likely to have a Downey representative in Sacramento. I've been here for a couple of years now and, and seen the council meetings, you know, devolve. I know there's a lot of frustration from the public about these meetings sometimes, about why we can't do more, but unfortunately, there are, you know, constitutional protections for free speech. You don't always have to, to, to like what people say, but it's, it's what's made our country great, and we, we survived through it, and you'll, we'll all survive through it. And, you know, just can, continue to, to make the, to fight the good fight, and you'll come out on the other side of that. But I sincerely, you know, am, am appalled many times by the, the language that is used, but, and I am sensitive to the attacks that you personally get, and, you know, tonight we had two inductees into that Hall of Fame, so I, I'm sorry that you had to experience that. But it's, you know, you, you succeed, and you do, in spite of the people that come up here sometimes, because I don't think they represent a majority of the residents that really call this place home and work here and play here. Because if you drive around this community, and people that drive around here all the time will tell you, it's a fantastic community, you just drive through it and you can see it and you can feel it. And to those people, I apologize for, for that behavior tonight, but this is my second to the last meeting, so I get to say a little bit more than I'd like to sometimes, but anyway, again, thanks, and I appreciate everybody and what you do, so that concludes my comments.
Thank you. And this is actually your last poll?
That's correct.
No, no, we have another council meeting.
We have one more council meeting.
Okay, so I won't say this is your last one. But thank you all again for being here at our council meeting. I just want to conclude with, I apologize also with the foul language that is sometimes used at our council meetings. It can be very offensive, and unfortunately, we just have to deal with it because of First Amendment rights. So I'll just leave it at that, and I will adjourn the, the city council meeting in memory of Paul
Bayrudy.
I was looking at Mr. Herman. Paul Bayrudy, Warren High School, class of 1972. Did you go to high school with him?
Yeah.
Paul Bayrudy, Warren High School, class of 1972, and Downey businessman, Officer Lenell Whitfield, Whittier Police Department, United States Marines killed in a military aircraft crash in the Imperial Valley Desert, the victims of the Ukraine crisis, and the lives lost due to COVID-19. A moment of silence.